Need to make sure anybody talks to the microphone, too.
Yeah.
Sam, you've kind of been slacking. Don't make me be the bad guy about this.
Slap my hand, slap my hand.
I'm not hitting anybody.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is Tuesday, April 18th, 2017. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes and reports received and filed?
The March 2017 letter piece filed and the 2016 annual report for Jeff City Ray for the Use Crisis Services.
Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings, events.
Campbell Board of Directors Meeting tomorrow. Saltways Management District Board Meeting tomorrow. Chamber Connections tomorrow night. About it.
I've got CAP Region Board Meeting tonight, Thursday. Did you get invited to the Jeff City High School Community Leaders Breakfast?
Oh, that's tomorrow, isn't it?
That's Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah, I might go to that.
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
Thursday nights, CAP Region Employee Recognition Dinner. Saturdays, the Lincoln LUs President's Gala. Day of Sharing. And then the Eagles have their 11th Annual Sip for Life for CAP Region, so.
Okay.
Got that. I think we're going to kind of rearrange our agenda. We'll go ahead with the presentation on the Public Works, discuss stormwater issues, and then we'll come back to the appointment to the Commission, since we've got so many people here. We could have moved this meeting out to the Marine Corps League Building. I mean, you got a bar out there.
It's flooded.
Marines are used to water, you know.
We ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got several items to talk about stormwater. And part of the meeting, there's actually two parts of the meeting, really. One, through our stormwater MS4 Plan mandated by EPA, administered by DNR, we're required to have stormwater meetings, public forums, in which people can, if they want to, present concerns that they have or talk about just stormwater stuff in general. And then also give you an update on where the county is on, you know, regulating stormwater or not, since that's part of what we're doing is coming up with ordinances for that. So like I said, it's kind of two parts. One, to talk about that part of it with, through DNR, that requirement. And then also, there's several folks here to present, if they choose to, stormwater problems they've had recently. And we'll get into that later. But one thing we want, there's an agenda, if you're interested, some of those are floating around. Five different key points we want to hit on. And I got public comment at the end. So unless there's something specific that you want to talk about, if you're here to present issues, we'll just wait till the end, unless the Commission wants to engage that as we're going through. We are working on stormwater ordinances. We have Christina Lubert here. She's the engineer working on that for the county. And this is required by DNR through EPA. And there's three different parts that we have to have in our ordinance. One is illicit discharge detection elimination. And that's basically dumping things into the streams that's not supposed to be there. We do go out and monitor certain points on streams that are in our MS4 boundary and check to see if there's anything being dumped. We haven't found anything to date, but we don't have an ordinance to address that if we find it. So that's one part that we're working on. The second one is construction site runoff control. There again, we do monitor construction sites, either projects that we're doing in-house or whether we have a contractor doing them or even developers building a subdivision. Property owners or developers building a large complex, larger than an acre, or even home construction. We do monitor erosion control, BNP's that are on those sites, and also check for erosion or cell runoff. We just don't have an ordinance to enforce that if a problem arises. We do, or we are able to kind of work with the contractor if there is a problem. And for the most part, there's not a whole lot of issues out there for that. But we do, we do not have an ordinance to address that if that comes up. That's the second of the ordinances that we're working on. And then the third, and probably the most difficult, is the post-construction site runoff control. And that's really two parts. One is quantity of water leaving sites or new development, controlling that or keeping that to where it doesn't increase beyond what the pre-construction was. And then also water quality testing or actually controlling water quality. And primarily when we're talking about that, it's usually the first flush of streets. If it hasn't rained for a while, you'll get, you know, oil, things like that, that are just on the streets. Salt, for example, even fertilizer, things like that in residential areas. The first rain, that stuff flushes out. Having things in place to be able to address that to where those pollutants don't keep on going down the stream. So those are the three parts. We have a draft ordinance, which contains all three parts that Christina and we have been working on. We met with the city to kind of compare some things that they're doing with what we're proposing to do. I don't think we're going to be exactly like the city just because the unincorporated areas are different. And we're never going to have the zoning or every ordinance in place to address exactly what the city's doing. But a lot of our drainage areas or water sheds do dump into the city, and then they deal with it. So we need to be close to what they're doing. And also, if contractors are doing work in the city or in the county, it can be confusing for them sometimes going from one to the other. So we need to be somewhat consistent. But in reality, I don't see us being stringent. So that's kind of where we're at on that. And then one thing that Andy on our staff has been doing is to delineate a buffer area around the city in which ordinance would be in effect. By, I guess EPA mandate, we're required that our ordinance only include the MS4 boundary, which is a very inconsistent line that's drawn around, basically around Jefferson City. We've had some areas that don't make sense why they're in, and we're contesting that. And that probably will be allowed by DNR to take some of those areas out that don't make any sense to be in. But when you look at it big picture, you could have a subdivision in which, you know, a house on one side of the street would be in and a house on the other would be out. But really, they need to be treated the same. So that's where we're going with our buffer area. And it would be primarily looking at the water sheds, like I said earlier, that dump into Jefferson City and trying to be consistent and have a good plan and basically just using some common sense on what areas would and should be in. So that's where we're at on our ordinance and are revising our stormwater plan to be in compliance with DNR. Is there any questions about that?
When will we be able to see the draft ordinance from Lubert?
We, actually, we just talked about that yesterday. Probably within the next couple of weeks, we'll start that series of meetings and review with the County Commission. And also, at some point, open that up for public comment as well before. We don't want to get anything passed or presented to you that hasn't been vetted and, you know, where we're not getting a whole lot of negative feedback on it. So I would say within the next month, we'll be getting into that process. Okay, moving on to number two, current stormwater projects. We've been doing, probably about the past 10 years, doing what I would say stormwater-specific projects. Now, we've kind of evolved into looking at the older subdivisions in the county. A lot of these not only have stormwater deficiencies, and by deficiencies, I say pipes that are resting out, inlets that are graded inlets that, you know, they become clogged very easily and then they're ineffective. Looking at replacing those. But for every one of these subdivisions that has those type of stormwater facilities, the roads are also in bad shape. So we try to do it as one big project to not disrupt people's lives any more than we have to or for a longer period. So we'll go in and do a large project, do it over the course of a year, maybe a year and a half, and be done and out of there with the idea that we don't have to come back. So, just except for just routine maintenance. So we've done several over the past 10 years. Right now, we're currently working on the Crossroads, South Town Estates and Rustic Oaks subdivisions. We'll bid those this summer. It'll be one project, and it'll be completed next year. And then in design right now, they're still working on the preliminary design. I have a meeting next week with the engineering company on that. The Meadow Brook Estate Subdivision, that's south of 179 and I guess be west or south of Idlewood Road. And that project, we would like to take that to construction in 2018, spring of 2018. These projects involve several easements, sometimes right away, primarily drainage easements, temporary construction easements. And it can be pretty time-consuming to get all those easements acquired in time to be able to bid these projects out. And then we're also facing, you know, bidding. We have to bid these at the right time of the year to catch contractors when they're looking for work. For that reason, like I said, the Crossroads, South Town Estates and Rustic Oaks subdivision, when we bid that later this year, we'll have in, you know, a pretty reasonable timeframe for contractors as they're looking at this. So they're not bidding it with a really tight completion date and don't even look at it or give us a really high price. So we want to make it as most competitive for the contractors to give us a good price that we can afford. So that's another conflict that we have. A lot of times when we're looking at these projects, if we catch it too late in the spring, then we may as well extend it into the next year for construction because we won't get a good bid if we try to tighten the timeframe too much. So we try to, try to, try to look at those. And like I said, it takes a lot of time to plan these things out and get these things out to bid. And then it's a lot of, it's very labor-intensive on our inspectors as they're doing the projects, dealing with property owners through the construction process. Any questions about that? We'll move on to number three, discuss recent stormwater issues. And we had two big storms last, I would say, last summer and into fall. And then also a pretty good one here about three weeks ago. And we hear the comment a lot of times, we've never seen this kind of rain before. This hasn't happened. And that's true. It hasn't happened. We, based on just some, not really research, but kind of looking at what our storm, how much water was and how short it came, we're probably looking at storms that these subdivisions have never seen. Beyond, definitely beyond what stormwater is designed to handle, the stormwater facilities. When we design or when engineers, and it's kind of a national standard, and we fall in line with some standards set by American Public Works Association through the KC Metro Chapter. And that's kind of the national standard that communities are using. MoDoc kind of follows the same thing, too. Pavement is designed on a 10-year storm. And generally, pipes, crossroad pipes, pipes between inlets and subdivisions are on a 25-year. You can look at maybe some sensitive areas and figure that on a lesser frequency storm. But that's the general standards for design. And so these three storms that we've had, we're pretty certain that the rainfall exceeded that capacity. So that's one issue. Really, there's nothing we can do about that. You don't really know for sure when you're in these old subdivisions if they're even designed for that standard or not. We just really have no way of knowing. We can't go back and find the design calculations that the engineering company used 30, 40 years ago. Just because these standards have been around that long, we can only assume that they were done to these standards. But like I said, these facilities are getting old. They're graded inlets. The inlets of pipes, they're just not, with today's, you know, development and things like that, they're just not designed to handle that. And so, and that's why we're doing projects to replace those where we can and where we have funding. Another issue, and I think was really key with this one that we had three weeks ago, is debris, clogged pipes or inlets. Lot of, in the spring, you get all the leaves and tree limbs and everything that's kind of dumped or ends up in creeks or in ditches. And that first big huge rain carries all that stuff down. Westview Heights area, we had several in which we know debris was the problem. And that seems to be the worst with the first big rain in the spring. That stuff kind of filters out and becomes lesser of an issue throughout the year. And then what I've found, and I know we see this a lot, and especially in the older subdivisions, we got a lot of structures that are built where the floor elevations are either just at maybe the top of the pipe, maybe below the top of a pipe, of a crossroad pipe, or below the road in a low point in a road. And so those are going to be just naturally prone to flooding if there's an issue. If a pipe gets clogged, there's nothing we can do about that or predict that. And so that's always going to be an issue. So ideally, if we go in and replace these pipes, we would have an inlet structure that would take in that debris and not allow it to be clogged. So, and then there's other, you know, definitely other issues that could have caused or other possible causes for the recent problems we've had. But I would say the biggest thing that we could say, the main cause, is we just haven't had these rains before. Just, I mean, that's fact. You just can't deny that. For example, the Westview Heights one was probably, I figured, about a 20-year storm. And that was just three weeks ago. And these are little spot, little locations. The one three weeks ago, we had spots two miles away that didn't have anything. I live on the east side of town and not even, I mean, yeah, it rained hard, but no flooding at all. So it just, it's very spotty, wouldn't you say, Larry? I mean, that's...
Well, I know we had like three and a half inches of rain out in that area in about 45 minutes to an hour's timeframe. When you get that type of rainfall, it's just hard to, well, it's impossible to be able to control that and take it through stormwater. We can't afford, as a county or as a community, to build structures that can take that kind of rainfall.
So out of the recent stormwater problems, three weeks ago, we did basically spend several days going through and looking at these issues and added some to this. Some have been a little bit ongoing since last year. Grouped them into, and there's a handout here that has some pictures kind of showing the areas more in detail so you can see what we got. But grouped them into potential new projects, do an analysis to determine the issue. And then flood-prone areas, which we don't really have a good answer for or, you know, even if there's anything we can do about that. The new projects, Charm Villa Drive, I put this first on the list. It doesn't follow in line with the pictures here. But Charm Villa Drive, that's one. And I think there were some railroad ties on the inlet side of a pipe that kind of fell in and blocked it and caused some flooding there. But we know that those pipes were kind of getting towards the end of their life. And we actually had that area designed when we did the Big Horn Drive project. We were going to try to do all that work in-house, but we're just, we just don't have the manpower or the time to be able to do all these stormwater projects. So we're going to actually take that one to full design plans and bid that project out. We'll bring you a contract on that next week, most likely. And like I said, that's already been designed by Bartlett and West back when we did Big Horn Drive. And so it's just a matter of putting those into the form, into a set of plans that we can bid. Should be a pretty simple little job there. South Brooks Drive, we've done, on Bagnall Drive, I guess the next road to the north in Westview Heights area, we've done three locations to replace culvert, or crossroad pipes and do inlets. And now we're getting kind of down to the South Brooks Drive area. And there's three areas there, kind of grouped them into three areas. The Collier Lane, Collier Court area, and that's one system there. The Shady Lane area, that's another system. And then Bradley Drive, which is kind of, it's north, kind of a loop north of South Brooks. But there's a crossroad pipe below that. And there's ditches behind houses, drainage ways behind houses that we would have to look at doing some work with, too. And then just south of that area, Shear Drive, Amanda Drive, there's a location there that, the inlet side of the pipe, I think, Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of collapsing on itself. Is that right? And holes in the, holes in the pipe and it's undermining. So those are areas that we're going to bring to the design phase and construction phase. It'll all depend on budget. You know, we do have some money beyond the projects that I told you about earlier to do some work in Westview Heights. I don't think we'll be able to catch all this with the current half-cent sales tax, five-year cycle. But we'll do what we can. And then potential analysis to determine the issues in three areas that we want to look at. And to do the analysis, we might be able to look in-house at some of these. But I'm going to most likely recommend that we have an engineering company do the hydrology and hydraulics to determine if the system is adequate. And if it is, why are things flooding? If it's not, then we'll look at ways to fix that. And the Gateway Drive, Brookview Drive area, Lakewood Drive, and then the Marine Corps League and Capital City Property Management area. And that one, I know there's some folks here to discuss that later. There's a pipe between those properties that drains from a lot of runoff coming off of and north of Business 50. And they've had problems with the last two storms in there. So one thing we offer to do on that one is to run a camera into that pipe to see if there's any internal issue that could be simple to fix. And we're also going to have our crews go do some debris removal in front of that pipe. We think that could be a part of the issue as well. But beyond that, we'd like to look at what the capacity is right there and see if there's an issue with that and what we can do to fix that. And then some flood-prone areas. And I think these are going to be ongoing problems. I don't, can't really recommend or give you an answer on how to deal with them, but at least start the discussion. The Notches Trace Estate Subdivision off of Henwick. And there's several locations there. We actually did a little work on the Deer Valley subdivision just east of there last year with a drainage ditch that was basically, had grown up and, you know, trees and debris. And it just wasn't draining properly. And it was running out of that ditch and dumping onto a property. And then on Notches Trace Drive, we've done some work there to alleviate that problem. But downstream, there's becoming some issues there. To help, not directly, but indirectly, help with some of their issues, we worked with Jefferson City Parks and Recreation to replace culverts under a drive that goes to the property below, kind of below or to the east of Bender Lake. That driveway had two pipes. It was a little wire crossing with pipes. Those pipes collapsed. And over the years, we think that it kind of blocked and sediment had kind of filled up the creek upstream of there. We worked with them and worked through the Corps of Engineers to get a permit to replace those pipes and lower that back down to what the stream channel should be through there. And we think over time, that'll help alleviate the problems down there. But beyond that, work in the ditch, I say ditch, the creek behind those houses, that would be, of course, off-county right-of-way and beyond what we would normally be doing. So maybe a further discussion or working with the property owners to figure out a way to get that done. And then Ravenwood Subdivision, south of Business 50, kind of Babe Ruth Drive area, that area. And that's on the list, on the pictures as well. It's completely in the floodplain, some of those structures in there. Not really much we can do there. But they did ask if there's a pretty good-sized box culvert underneath Business 50 that is starting to, some gravel bars starting to form on the upstream side of that. And when speaking with them, I told them, well, generally, we wouldn't be able to do that just because it's outside of our jurisdiction. But we might be able to work with them or work with, help them work through the Corps of Engineering process to do some work with that. So, and then last on the list before we get to public comment, we have some areas we've talked about recently about one way to address stormwater, runoff control and excessive runoff is detention, storage. And we got two properties in the Business 50 area that could be candidates for that. One is between Gateway Drive and Brookview Circle. Some property owned by the county. It's about two to three acres in that area. And it would, there's another sheet, this sheet here, that shows some shaded areas. This is actually generated from GIS. We can do a drainage area map that'll show at any point on the map what drainage area is going into that. So that one could be a potential to alleviate some of the water going into the Business 50 area. More or less, it'd be west of Gateway Drive where that intersection is. And then another one, and I've looked at it, it might be a little challenging, but the property's there and maybe there's some potential to do something there. Kind of behind Vale of Tears, south of Business 50. Vale of Tears Drive, that area, we own property back in there, too. And that's along that main creek that runs behind Business 50. So I think, you know, we'll have to work that through the process and work with you all to see if that's something we want to tackle. To do a detention, storage, I think they're relatively easy to build, but you have to design them. We'd have to have an engineering company design to design that. And the purpose of detention, storage is to capture the water, let it out slowly so you don't get these high discharge peak runoff. It just captures that and controls that, lets it out on a more steady pace. So that's all I have on that. And I would open it up to public comment. Let anybody that would want to address the County Commission, I guess.
Does Marine Corps, do you have a spokesman or? Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to move our clerk. If you would, Dave, if you would.
I'm going to say it if you don't mind, so.
No, no.
We've been in that building in Apache Flats since early 1992. We had drainage problems at that time that ran between the two properties. This is a rental buildings to our east. And our building sits on the west of that drainage ditch, which goes all the way around to the lake in that area. You know basically where I'm talking about. The drainage system that was put in there was put in in the end of 1992. So that's, if my math is right, well over 25 years. And we've had four different problems with it. There's been a lot of times that where rain had fell and we had problems with it. The drainage system raised up out of the ground. When a different work was done on the highway and different work would be done to the north of the highway of Business 50, the water would seem to get worse. Like right now, there's construction on the other side, on the north side of the highway. And all of a sudden, we've got water problems again that are raising right up to the building and coming out of the ditches. I know the problem existed before because when the initial work was done alongside of a building, I run an excavator on that project. And there was a lot of water went down that ditch and went around and goes all the way around to behind your lake. That creek goes all the way around all them businesses. So it really needs to be looked at. I mean, the analysis needs to be done. Right now, we're having water coming right up to the building, flooding our air conditioner, our five air conditioning systems. So we've got a major concern there when it comes to the building. We understand if it's our problem, we will kick in with a shovel. We understand if it's, if it's our problem, we will kick in with a shovel. If it's a county problem, then I, I would, I would appreciate the fact that you guys can take a good, serious look at it all the way around. Because I think any of the businesses that follow down that creek are affected and have been affected in the last 30 years. I can go back that far. So, so that's where we stand. We definitely welcome anything the county's gonna do as far as an analysis of it and the way they're, and, and we would like to hear an answer, you know, when the analysis is done, we'd like to know what was, what was found out and what was determined, you know? Any engineer knows that if you stick a shovel in the ground and move dirt, you just change the drainage that quick. It doesn't matter whether it's the EPA, whether it's the Corps of Engineers, they'll look at the Mississippi River and the Missouri River. They've changed over the last 125 years. So any engineer knows that. So we, and I know you guys are looking at it. I can tell just by looking at what you've got right here, that you know what the problem is in a large, in a large area. I realize we're in a small area, but we would appreciate anything you could do as far as getting there and letting us know what's going on with it. Is there any questions of us? Anything we could answer? Anytime you'd like somebody there, contact us or somebody in the building Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Or I can give you a business card and we're done. And we can get ahold of somebody out there if you need somebody out there.
It's been great to work with them.
Jerry Sandy is with me back here and Rick Fettal there, both on the building committee. And Jerry's in and around the building constantly. I think you guys probably know Jerry. So he's around, in and around the building constantly. That's about what we got.
What we've offered to do, like Eric mentioned before, we're gonna try and run a camera. We know what our portion of what condition it's in, but we're gonna run a camera all the way down through the pipe, through their property or between them and the rental property.
Rental property, yeah.
And just see if there's an issue with the pipe itself, was installed with the Marine Corps League. So we're trying to work with them, see, see what we can figure out.
That's about all we've got, sir.
We might get you an LCAC, too. That, those are pretty neat.
We've got a barbecue on the 29th.
For the record, I'm Richard Acton. I'm 5512 Bull Rock Drive on your tabs there. Representing the Natchez Trace subdivision. Home was built in 2008. You know, it's fairly new, the subdivision in that area is fairly new, not some of the older ones that you've heard of previously here. But what I'm really wanting to speak to, and I know the pictures kind of give you the magnitude and the impact of all the homes there, is our safety and security. That's first and foremost. I know that the county itself granted permits to build there, but working with Eric and want to publicly acknowledge that he's been extremely helpful and accommodating, answered a lot of questions from my wife anyways. As far as just being able to work with the county and partner with you at some capacity to see what we can do. We've also sought third-party as far as, you know, legal counsel and engineering firms just to see what else. From a homeowner's standpoint, you know, we could take action for, but kind of hard to keep my wife asleep at night when there's big storms right now. For remediation that we've taken as far as rebuilding the home and the cost and all that, they're all listed in those, you know, I'll keep it short and sweet here for you. But any help, any assistance that the county can do and partner with us, knowing that this was somewhat fairly new on the radar for the county, would be appreciated. I know that there's a couple other folks here that wanted to mention a few things, too, for their homes from the division. Well, Dan, do you want to speak?
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Dan Greve. I live at 513 Split Rock Drive. I live actually between Rich and Greg Hoffmeyer. Yeah, it's, I guess what I'm, my real scare with this type of situation is when this water came up, I'm not sure even what month it was, September last year, came about two feet up to, to our house. I've got two nieces and a granddaughter that sleep down in the basement sometimes. And if they would've been down there, we were, we were at the lake, thank goodness, that weekend. But if they would've been down there, there could've been some real, not just property problems, but problems with, with their lives. So that's, I guess that's my biggest concern. Property's, of course, my concern also. But that could've been very, very scary, that water coming in like that as fast as it came in. And that's, I guess that's my biggest concern with this situation. And like Rich said, anything that we can do as property owners, we're more than happy to do it, but we're gonna have to have some help. And that's all I really got to say.
I'm Greg Hoffmeyer. Mentioned I live 509 Split Rock. Just kind of the same issue there. The one thing that, we totally appreciate everything that you guys have done with addressing the culvert, you know, at the, crossing Henwick there. And I noticed that you had dug up quite a bit. I don't know how far you guys are coming up there. That was one thing I was gonna ask, Eric.
Say you guys, actually Parks and Recreation Network, we're just, more or less just helping them make sure it gets put in. If we can't, it dies and everything.
Okay. So do you know about how far they're gonna?
Hey, put the mic over, please.
As far as how much they're actually taking out of the creek, there's regulations from the Corps of Engineers on what you can do in the creek.
Deep you can dig.
It's just really constricted to just that area for the pipes.
Okay. So, and I know you'd mentioned earlier with that, like how, if, if we don't own that, the owner of that property, they would have to go in and get permits to actually, to dig that up, then is that?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think if it's off, if it's on a private property, then actually owner would have to get the permit.
Okay.
Some of that creek might actually be on Parks and Recreation property. Some is on your all's property as well.
Sure.
We have a contact at the Corps of Engineers that I think maybe you got the name, an email. We would just have to work with them and see, see what the process is.
Okay.
They're usually, what I've experienced, they're usually pretty easy to work with in this area. They get a little, a little more difficult when they get into more urbanized areas, bigger, more sensitive areas, but they're pretty simple to work with.
Okay.
We haven't had any issues with them, so.
So I think we can, you know, it looks like that, most of that part is being addressed. And again, thank you for getting in touch with Parks Direct to do that. Our second issue was obviously the Woodward Lake. And it seems like a big part of our flooding maybe had happened or been caused due to some of the overflow from Woodward Lake. So I guess what we would like to have addressed is maybe, you know, if they have a stormwater retention plan in place, if they don't, could they get one and manage it? And who's in charge of, you know, kind of looking over their shoulder, I guess, to make sure that that's, because it seems like every time there's a big rain, that they don't have much of a levee on that lake and it pours over pretty easy. So do we raise the levee? Do we get a retention pond for them? Just something that alleviates that, that stormwater overflow into our creek and floods our houses? You know, because you can see those binders, there was significant damage, a lot of cost, a lot of cost in all of us, you know, trying to put in things that would stop the water from coming in in the future. And there's just nothing to guarantee that's gonna happen unless something happens with that water that's, that we believe is coming from Woodward Lake. And again, we've been in contact with engineers to try to get some idea on if that is truly the case, but we'd like the county's help looking into that, I guess is what we're really asking, so. There, I mean, we had fish in our stormwater runoff creek that, you know, that's, that's not normal. That thing is empty most of the time. So those fish can only be coming from Woodward Lake. There's no other possible option. That water's obviously coming from there, so.
Just, just a few things on that. I know we've talked to a few of you all, Woodward Lake, they drained it down.
Yes.
They're doing some work around the banks, the shoreline of some of the, it's kind of silted in over the years. And they're, they're doing some work. And to do that, they had to get it dropped down to where they could get an excavator in there to do the work. They installed a drain to keep it down five foot. Well, when we get, when we have the rain, anytime it's gonna rain and that's gonna fill up and it's just gonna keep on draining out till it gets back down to that five foot below normal level. That's actually helping you all because it's, it's acting as a retention.
Sure.
Kind of like what I talked about earlier, lets it out on a slower period of time. That's actually a good thing right now, but when it fills back up to normal elevation, it's just gonna be a retention. It's not gonna, you know, it'll fill up. And if it gets to the point that it gets too full, it'll just spill over the banks or go down the spill fill, or spillway. And just act, basically, it's like it's not even there. Water will just go in and go out. It'll allow a little bit of spread, more or less, and it's.
Slower, so it doesn't.
There's probably, you know, there's, there's a lot of, you'd have to look at a lot of engineering calcs to determine exactly what that does to you all downstream. That's beyond what we can do. We'd have to hire that out. But I, I think that, you know, the Woodward Lake issue by itself is probably beyond what the county's able to do. We don't have any regulatory authority over them.
So who does, who does regulate?
Nobody.
So if we had a problem with Woodward Lake, we'd have to have attorney call their representative?
Exactly. You know, that's, sorry to say, but that's basically on record. Find out the regulations we have in the county. We don't have any authority to field, regulate impoundments of any sort. You know, part of what Eric and I were saying, you know, with stormwater regulations, you know, we can look at, you know, some of the retention. But when you have areas built out, it really doesn't do much for you all already. You know, the retention would be more on, on new areas. You know, if there's a new subdivision getting built upstream of you, we could require it if the ordinance is passed, but may not release any more water than what they're prior to construction. So we've got hurdles and, you know, and it's the same thing, basically, you know, the city of Jefferson working with right now, you know, trying to figure out areas where they can build retention ponds or detention ponds in a area that's already established.
Tough to find real estate for them.
Right. But it's something we're definitely looking into, you know, and trying to work with.
One thing to point out to you all is, yeah, Woodward Lake, that watershed is, contributes to your area and definitely runs behind your house. But there's also the stream that comes from, if you can see it on here. Here's your blue line for Woodward Lake, but then there's also this one that comes from back here. So there's a pretty good area there as well. Now, it's draining all pasture, you know, wooded area, so you're not, you're probably not seeing as much of the quick, you know, flush out. But that is a contributing factor behind your house and the other, all three of you all.
Which way is that coming in from the?
Think of Rainbow Drive is basically up here.
Okay.
See that blue line? Pioneer Trail Drive would be right over in this area.
Okay.
And so really, anything up here, Pioneer Trails, the red, or Rainbow Drive, it kind of runs the bridge through there by Pioneer Trail School. And so anything from there towards you all would go down through there, so.
So unless, the Gateway and the Vale of Tears retention ones that you were talking about, would that have any impact on where we're at?
No.
Zero?
No.
Okay.
I think what we're looking at, yours, other built-up subdivisions is, we can't, you know, there might be some little spot things we can do for detention, but we're really looking at how do we let the water pass through without causing any problems? I, I think really, your best solution would be cleaning that creek out. The last time I was over there, a couple weeks ago, there's a lot of trees, there's, you know, debris, dead trees, tree limbs, you name it. There's all kinds of stuff in there. And that's doing nothing but.
Blocking it up.
And letting it just, you know, spill out.
Right. It slows the water down, doesn't allow it to stay in the channel when you have a creek like that.
The problem is, is that that meanders beyond my property, like.
Right.
And it's not even on their property. It's back of there. So they don't have, you know, they can't really do it. So we're trying to figure out who, and that's the biggest issue, is who is in charge of getting that corrected if they don't own it and it's flooding our properties?
Right. The current subdivision regulations, it's actually up to the landowners to maintain the drainage ways as far as, you know, not necessarily your all so much, but like again, Western Pikes had some issues that were running into, and Western Pikes is landowners, they're going out and they trim a tree up in a fall and they take their limbs and go back there in the drainage way. First big rain we have, boom, it's down, first pipe comes through, it's got it locked up. And, you know, we don't have any regulatory authority as far as telling the landowner to go in there and clean it up, nor do we have the ability to go in there and clean it up for them. You know, that's something that, again, depending on what course we take as, as a county, whether we get that authority to be able to go in there under an emergency situation to do work, you know, whether we backcharge landowners or what, we don't know. That's some of the issues that we're gonna.
Okay. So I guess the last question is, who, who does own the property behind theirs? Is it Parks and Rec that owns that? Are you sure of that?
Yeah, right. And that, that's just it. If we could, you know.
Because if Parks and Rec is already doing that work and, and they're cleaning that part up and they don't own that and that part of the creek is still covered with debris and stuff, we would like for them to continue that cleaning.
Information that, you know.
Okay. I won't take up any more of your time.
The developer, the original developer of your subdivision owns everything.
Steve Young?
Except Parks and Recreation, they would own the rest of it. Like I said, that stream kind of meanders through. And talking with Parks and Recreation, they didn't have any interest or, I shouldn't say that, didn't think they had any authority to go in and do a bunch of creek cleaning out and all that. You know, the owner, the other owner's probably not gonna do it as well. It'd probably be, and then you also have to deal with, is the Corps of Engineers gonna even let you?
Sure.
That's probably our first hurdle to.
Get the permit.
Get past, yeah.
Okay.
See what they're gonna allow.
You know, what they've allowed us to do in, in other places, we can go in and remove material, put above the normal flow line. As far as getting down into the channel, the expanded channel, they've not allowed us to do that. I mean, the only thing we can do, like on the moral river, is we, you know, we've got an issue with the structure or something. They've allowed us to put gravel, put above it on the water level. But again, that doesn't necessarily help your issue as far as opening the channel and stuff. And that's, that's something, you know, like Eric said, we're gonna have to try and get with the Corps and see what we can do.
Well, this is why, I think we're all on board. You know, we've spent money to try to get it fixed. If this floods again, you know, we're all, it's a few hundred thousand dollars in six homes that we dropped in repairs and cleanup, and we don't want to go through that again. And we're, we're willing to spend the money to fix it, but we can't fix what we don't know. That's our biggest issue, so.
What we made, like I said, if we can get all the parties together, see what we can broker some type of project, where we can try and look at it and do some, see what we can do, you know, work.
Okay.
And then just to, again, just to reiterate, those who manage the stormwater plants for those areas who can contact them as well, because they have that some.
There isn't, there aren't no stormwater plants in the county. That's what we're, what Eric and Rich and I talked about is the stormwater regulation. We don't have them and it can't.
Maybe I'll rephrase it. Those who granted the permits to do that and then what was required for those permits, just to get that information.
They've met all the, as far as the design and stuff, they've met all the requirements that we can enforce.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be authoritarian anymore just to.
That's what we're, we're looking at, or we'd like to, and address the issue, you know, as far as having a, you know, maybe a three-foot bottom elevation above the banks of the stream, you know. We've also, I know in the city, I don't know if they're fortunate, they have, where the house came, it has to be a foot above the curb line, you know, the living area as far as, you know, issues like that. That's stuff that we're trying to look at and see if we can get. But again, it's not gonna help you all as far as the houses that are ready to construct. We're gonna have to work with the channel and stuff there and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Greg, quick question. You got an estimate from Nelson Land Services for something. I'm not sure what it was for, but you had a $14,000 estimate. I was just curious as to what that was for, or?
It was to repair the creek wall, an estimate to repair the creek wall because it had, the gentleman who put the creek in, the creek walls in, didn't backfill the rocks. And so as the water continues to raise and floods the land, it's washed all the dirt out and the rocks have all fallen into the creek.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
First time this happened?
First time, yeah. First time, we, we've always had water up in our backyard, like anytime a big rain, but maybe just out of the creek. But here recently, obviously the big flood, and then again, what was that, two weeks ago, we had water, got pretty close again. We started getting nervous, so, yeah.
For my home, I know that previously it had come very close. My, a little more unique situation that Eric can give you more detail about, but basically the bottom line is the home itself is, and I'm paraphrasing of Eric, a few inches from the hundred year and five hundred. So somehow it was owned to where the home itself wasn't in the flood plain, but my yard was. And because of that, my home especially, I know that it, just to reanecd a little conversation, I've been there for almost four years, water has come up close to the home, if not right by the doors. And that's, you know, again, obviously we've realized the worst of the worst. So at this point, I've done taking some steps, build the retention wall, is the best way I can put it, and that was all permitted and everything. But, you know, it's where my kids play and things like that. And I'm smiling at Eric. He knows the survey of my yard very well. My concern is the fact that, you know, my kids have sleepovers down there and stuff like that. It's happened at 1:00 AM and like for weather, weather radios, they'll woke me up. But if I can't do anything, if it's on my yard, what, what can I do? Kind of at the mercy, I can't, I can't decide.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Just bringing it up, but it's not limited to the west side. There's other spots on the east end too that are out. Ward's built stuff are the same way. They've never had this problem before. You've got more impervious surfaces and stuff, so they're, they're interested in it too.
Yeah.
Gentlemen of the commission, fellow citizens, hi, how are you today?
Good morning.
My name is James Michael Chittam. I live at 5507 La Charette and I'm also representing Natchez Trace. If you wouldn't mind, I've got a written statement. I'm going to avert my eyes for just about two or three minutes and read that statement and conclude. But just kind of a testimony as to the flood and the damage that occurred last September. So I want to emphasize that we're not here today to seek damages for what has taken place, but rather in an effort to get the owners of this Woodwork Lake Association to act in accordance with the law and standards of our community to prevent further loss and possibly that of human life by taking action to secure this property. That's my emphasis and I think we've spoken to that today as a neighborhood. I understand flooding does happen and that there are always consequences to where we build and where we live and how we do that as, you know, we do that and expand as a community. And I understand limited, in a limited sense, engineering, drainage, that type of thing. Some from hearing you all today, some from talking to my fellow neighbors, but this was a catastrophic event. This catastrophic event, we believe, was caused by the overflow of Woodward Lake. We purchased our home in April of last year and four months later, we were witnessing a tragedy with a level of flooding that invaded our homes. We were told and it was confirmed that this creek bed had never flooded since the home had been built over a decade ago. So drainage was fine up until this time. When it rained, water drained and in a matter of days, the creek bed would be dry again as it was supposed to function. Recently, we have had continuous runoff from draining of the lake. As a matter of fact, when we had thunderstorms in March, I looked at the historical records, I think March 6, it was a Sunday night or a Monday, we had point three eighths inch of precipitation. The water had, had gotten brown and was rolling at that point because of the drainage of the lake and the saturation of that creek bed. So that exacerbated that problem. Water came within about a foot of the edge of the creek and by my house. I have some video of that. I took some pictures. It didn't come through with my, my Apple phone too well, but I did witness that. I have included some photos that my wife and I took in the folders that you have of the latest high water incident. After this incident in March, we went back and looked for the source. We had heard the source was the drainage of the lake. We wanted to see it for ourselves. We followed the creek to the source, the lake, and saw several things. A recently, what I would call crudely built PVC drainage system with about a foot wide pipe, L-shaped, that obviously had been built recently because there was just a dirt mound and no grass or weeds or anything had grown on it. Blue pipe coming in, one end to the lake with some holes in it, another pipe going right out to the creek that drains into the creek behind our house. I didn't have any indication as a homeowner that this was taking place. Certainly, I could have looked it up and probably seen that somebody had to permit to do this. But as a homeowner, I had no indication it was taking place. Nobody had notified us downstream and I haven't had a whole lot of evidence that our rights or our safety was taken into consideration. My property, 5507 La Charette, is a new beautiful home in a great subdivision with great neighbors. You guys know some of them. If not, you probably know of some of them. We're a small family of four. I'm going to celebrate my second anniversary this July 4th. So I'm a patriot, patriot as well. I have a 10-year-old and a soon to be 12-year-old boy who's going to be 12 this summer. We love living there. It's our dream home and a beginning of a better life and a better family living for all of us. The violence in which this lake overflow exacerbated was so fast, I want to point out, and so furious that it tore my garage door off its hinges and bent it backwards. Four to five feet of water came into my garage, swirled around with enough force to move my Toro lawn tractor as well as everything else that we had stored there since we had just moved there, combining two households into one, and just basically trashed everything. Thousands of dollars worth of items that we had been storing that is not recorded there, just stuff that we had to record as a loss. Trailers full of things that we had lost. The water also came around to the other side of my house, up to six inches of my downstairs windows and had one of these broken. I'm sure the damage from the water coming in would have been severe enough that one of my sons, sleeping downstairs, would have been in grave danger. If it can, if it can get up and move a Toro lawn tractor, I'm sure it can pin a small, you know, 80, 90 pound boy against the bed and he could have drowned. I can't afford to let this happen again as a homeowner and a father, and I can't stand by and let it happen without doing something. And that's why I'm here today. I'm asking this commission to understand and enforce the laws of the community if they can. I'm trying to understand where the responsibility lies. I've heard several things today, but we want to go on record as stating that we understand that this is a not-for-profit Woodward Lake Association. Somebody has to have some jurisdiction over these people and over how they went about doing what they had done. I just want to make sure that we're on record as doing that, as, as discussing this today and that something takes place because I would hate for it to happen again and a child, one of our children, a lot of families in that area, something happened to one of them. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time, appreciate everybody for listening today and thank you. I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions, gentlemen?
For me, we understand and we feel sorry for you guys and we're trying to do what we can, but at the same time, you know, sometimes our hands are tied with what we can do. So, you know, what, like Larry said, with these big events, it's, sometimes it's hard to control water. I mean, you know, it's going to go where it wants to go. And so we're going to look at, at detention ponds and some other, you know, things that we can enact. I don't know how much we're going to be able to do in existing areas, but, you know, we'll, we'll try to work with you as much as we can.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Is there anyone else in that area? Just us. Okay. Just to follow up with all that, your area would be one as we look at analysis of, you know, what's going on and to determine if, what and if we can do. And just to follow up on the Woodward Lake, we didn't know they were doing it either or when they were doing it. We knew they were talking about it, but there was, there's nothing that we can do to stop it. There's no permitting, no nothing. There's no ordinances or zoning or anything in the county that can do anything.
Yeah. Even with the dam safety program, it's not big enough dam to meet the requirements DNR. So it's not good on you all. You want to understand.
Yeah. I just, I just want to go on record and state that we understand, we believe that's what the problem, how it exists. And so further downstream, that's a bad choice of words, if anything happens, then we'll look to that association.
Yeah.
Just one other thing. I mean, this, this is a compounding problem that we have, you know, with, with new development, whether it be in the city or the county or whatever. But in the past, stormwater's always been the guy downstream. You know, it's a, it's not, it's not your problem, you know, I'm just putting it in the creek. And so, you know, as we, as we build new subdivisions, as we build new roads and we put in the stormwater, well, we're collecting it all, but it's still all going to the creek. And so, you know, we create all this impervious surface and, and the water's got to go somewhere. And I realize, you know, unfortunately, if you live down creek, you know, that creates a big problem. Apache Flats is the same way. You know, we have all this new development and we're creating more stormwater going downstream. So, you know, we, we don't typically like to build detention ponds, but, you know, it's something that's coming, something that's going to have to happen. We've got to make new developments control their own stormwater. And so whether that's in the city, in the county, whatever that may be. So it's just, it's just something we're going to have to address. So appreciate you guys, appreciate you all coming and, and we'll try to do what we can.
Yeah. We'll keep working with Eric and Larry, see if we can do anything.
Do something. We'll take anything. Pretend it's your home over there.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Do you want your binders back?
No.
Okay. You'll say if you need them.
That's for Randy tonight, yeah.
I'll take one, I'll take one.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday, Rick.
Next year, we're going to get this range.
She's going to keep for our, for our
Thank you guys. Okay. Yeah. I mean, I saw it. Actually, I saw one in Warza, Zach Samens. It's kind of sickening and I understand your plight.
Sure.
He can get it back to you if you
Yes, yeah, that's fine.
He might print some pictures for you.
Okay. It for that. Let's
Is that it then for the stormwater, Eric? Or do we have anybody else?
I think we're, we're done.
Okay. Okay. We'll keep moving ahead. We'll go back to appointments by commission. Appointment of Wynne Kelly to On-Site Wastewater Treatment Board.
So Wynne Kelly is a local soil scientist, brings a lot of experience to the group and we're, we're glad that he agreed to be part of the On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Board.
Did he used to do the soil tests?
I think he's a soil evaluator. So.
Okay. So you're, where's he at?
He works here in Cole County. Did they
And he actually lives in Cole County?
Lives in Cole County. So they used to live in the OC, but
He used to live in?
The OC, yeah.
Okay. That's why I didn't know if the head lived in Cole County or not.
The specification, yeah, the specifications of the board says that they could live in another county if they work extensively in Cole County, but he actually lives here now. So.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with it. Don't have any more questions.
Motion.
I'm good, Chris.
Yeah.
Questions on it?
I'm good.
Okay. I'll make a motion to appoint Wynne Kelly to the On-Site Wastewater Treatment Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are, yeah. Commission comments. Beds and contracts, discussion of ambulance purchase options, bid number 2017-18, sole source.
We had brought this up a few weeks ago and I think Jerry had spoken with O Sage on the possibility of a couple demo units. So that's why we wanted to regroup today to discuss that. Jerry, I don't know what you found out.
We did a sole source bid with the two demonstrator units. One was a Chevy diesel, the same chassis that we have now. It's got a slightly different configuration on the box, but we could make it work. And then we also looked at the van, the Ford Transit van. The thought was to use that for BLS level transfers. And the, the price for the diesel demonstrator came in at 144.9. The price of the van came in at 88.7. So we were still, we had 220,000 in the budget. We're still over budget, but I think all things considered, that, that would be the better route to go than the hundred and almost 50,000 apiece for the two new gas engine boxes. And the other thing that this does is it gives us the capability now to keep our main fleet diesel. And chances are, it buys us 18 to 24 months to see what the industry does with the chassis. I'm skeptical that they're going to stay with gas, but it's hard to say at this point. But it, it just buys us a little time to see if the major chassis manufacturers revert back to having a diesel option available. Because right now, if, if we don't get this diesel ambulance, the next ambulance that we have that has a box on it will be a gas engine.
And that Ford Transit would be like the one you had out here?
It would be that one.
It would be that one.
O Sage had that. The reason it's a little more cost effective is they had that build as a demonstrator to take to shows. And so it's actually available now. Both the trucks are available now. They need a little retrofit to, to, to be able to work for us, but minimal.
Do you have those pricing?
You got the bid tabs, Jim?
I have, you should have the bid tabs.
No, we got bid tabs for Foster Coach and O Sage Industries for 2017 Type 3s.
That's all I had. This is the first I'm hearing this information. Looks like there's a copy here. Jerry had.
Copy, Jeff.
Did you email those to us, Jerry?
I thought I did.
We may have. I was looking at the ones that were attached to the agenda.
I don't know if I, I don't know if I
I didn't go look for it.
I didn't send those to you either.
Jerry.
Secret. It's a secret.
Just blame it on Kevin. He's not here.
Yeah. He's an award winner, so
He is.
Can't blame too much on him.
Yeah.
And I can't blame it on the sheriff. He's here too, so.
You don't blame him.
Okay, yeah. Sheriff's not here now. Blame it on him.
What's the mileage on the demo units? Do you have any idea?
Minimal. They're, they're less than 3,000 each and it's full factory warranty.
I haven't signed any of those. Sorry. So when you say full factory warranty, I mean, a lot of times it seems like, it's like a one-year limited warranty.
There's, there's actually two warranties. There's a warranty from the automotive dealer. So it's just like when you buy a car. Generally, it's
Three years?
I can't, I'd have to check if you need it. Now, I don't remember if it's 336 or 560, five years, 60,000 on the chassis. And then generally, the box now has a, it's either a 10-year or a lifetime warranty from the manufacturer on like electrical components and things like that. And I'm not talking light bulbs, but I'm talking if it had a wiring issue or something like that. There's a pretty extended warranty and I could get you that information if we needed it.
And so the new Ford Transit, it says it's a V6. So is that, is that a diesel or is that a gas?
Gas.
It's, it's a gas.
So that would take the one in the fleet to a, a gas versus the diesel.
If there's a silver lining to having one gas ambulance, at least it would just be the one van. So it'll be a different model than the rest of them. It, and And unless they really tried hard with a hammer, they couldn't get diesel in the gas engine. You could get unleaded into the diesel a lot easier, but...
So, what, one ambulance is, are we getting rid of?
We have two Ford diesels that we're going to take out of service, and one, we're going to send to the sheriff's office for their new, for their different special ops vehicle, and then, we'll sell the other one. We think that if we sell it online, we can do better than trade-in. So, it's a bit of a crapshoot, but they offered us $4,500 for it, and I think it's worth almost twice that much. Again, it's a crapshoot selling them online where they use the government website or eBay or something like that, but...
I've got deals, you can set a minimum too. FYI.
So, the sheriff's gonna buy one, or we're giving him one?
What we're gonna do is, we're gonna take our old unit and take it offline and send it to the auction. Whatever funds we get from that, we'll gladly give to EMS.
So, we're gonna, basically, gonna give you an updated version, you're gonna get rid of your old one, and we're gonna take the proceeds from that, and then, we're gonna sell the other one.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Sounds like a pretty good deal for you, Sheriff.
We'll work out for you.
We're all in this together.
Well, that's a good reuse. Keep it in the county. No, I like the idea.
So, we're over budget by about...
I don't have that.
$14,000?
Yeah.
Is that right? We have $220?
And like I said, with the proceeds from the sale of the truck, plus whatever the sheriff would get, we'd be, we're still gonna be over, but we'd be pretty close.
Closer.
I like the idea of using the transit for transports, I think that's much more effective.
So, will a unit be assigned to that Transit for that shift, and it'll be used for transports and other, or will they be in and out, or...
Well, there's two ways to do this. One is, the preferential way to do it, and the most cost-effective way for us to do it, is to have two EMTs staff that ambulance, and hire two full-time EMTs to staff that ambulance Monday through Friday. That would necessitate an additional crew. And, you know, we've talked about that, and we've run some numbers, and Kristen and Debbie revisited those, but that would be the best way to do it. It would be the most cost-effective way to do it, and operationally, we would not want to send a paramedic crew in that truck, they won't have paramedic-level equipment, and it's more costly to us to do it that way. So, I think the most efficient way is to staff it with two EMTs. And then, I've been working with the hospitals on having a better system to schedule these and identify these trips ahead of time, so that 24 hours ahead, we can plan the trips. I'm not talking the trips that come up from the emergency department or the ICU that have to go to Columbia or wherever, I'm talking about routine trips that we can schedule ahead of time, so that we can, we can use this crew for, it depends on the day and the number of transfers, but you could schedule them for eight to 12 hours.
So, we're talking about an ambulance and a transport van, and adding a new crew?
Mm-hmm. To me, the Transit goes with the crew. It really wouldn't work very well, and we wouldn't get the biggest bang for our buck if we, if we tried to do it with the existing makeup of the staff that we have. It would create a lot of waste and inefficiency to do it that way.
So, obviously, we're just talking about a transfer crew of two EMTs with no adjustments to the night supervisors or any of that?
Well, the proposal that I submitted was to have one crew seven days a week, Monday through Friday, when the bulk of the transfers happened, it would be two EMTs. And then, on the weekend, it would be an EMT and a paramedic. Those would be part-time folks. The full-time, Monday through Friday, would be the transfer crew, because that's when the bulk of those scheduled transfers happen. I also recommended that we pull those supervisors offline at night. With that additional crew, we just need them to be more available here, and they can't be gone on transfers themselves, we just run into too many issues. But that was the complete proposal that I recommended a few weeks ago, that we've worked on since then. It's not without cost, though.
I think you and Kristen were looking...
Yeah, I think you guys were...
Yeah.
Yep. Well, I can say, just from my opinion, I'm okay with the two vehicles and being a little over budget. Now, that being said, I'm really not okay with bringing on any new staff until I see the income start to go up. And so, our income has been about $270,000 a month, and we need that income to be closer to $370,000 a month. And so, when we get to that point, the EMS service is starting to come close to breaking even on what it's costing us. Now, that's just on staffing, and that has nothing to do with capital. I mean, we're still out in capital expenses for the service, but at least, we're paying wages, and we're paying everything else, repairs, but, I mean, I'm not saying that we don't need it. I'm not saying that I wouldn't approve two EMTs for five days a week running just transfers, if that would decrease some of our overtime costs. So, I mean, I've always said I'd look at that, if bringing on more staff decreases our overtime, I think that makes sense. I mean, when you go from a $15 an hour to a $22 or $23 an hour person by paying overtime, obviously, you can afford to pay benefits, you know, when those costs start to get that high. So, I just, before I start increasing more staff, I need to see that revenue come up substantially.
It's a bit of a double-edged sword, because without the staff, we turn the transfers away. With the staff, we can't run all the calls that are here, and our primary mission is 911, so we can't run all the transfers and only leave one or two ambulances here consistently, that doesn't work either. So, it's a bit of a double-edged sword, when you talk about, we will raise revenue when we get the ventilators in, and we start running the ventilator trips, because we'll do that with the existing staff, and those are, excuse me, higher-dollar trips, but, like I said, it's hard to raise revenue in the EMS world with a high level of fixed cost for the cost of readiness for 911, when you can't do all the transfers that you're getting, and you can't do all the transfers, or we can't do all the transfers now, without that staff. So, there's no easy answer. I'm not here saying we have to do it, I'm just telling you what the options are based on what we do.
I get what you're saying, and I see that, you know, there's a chicken and the egg thing...
Right.
Going on, but at the same time, you know, we, when John was here before you came, you know, we said we were seeing an influx in call volume, an influx in call volume, and so, you know, we're running a, you know, 500 or 1,000 more calls a month. I don't know what that number is, but we're not really seeing a revenue increase. I mean, when I look back at the revenue for the past 12, 18 months, it's pretty consistent every month, and here we are, running more calls, and there's no revenue gain. And so, to me, it's like, well, how can you run more calls, how can you do more work, and you're not seeing a revenue increase?
When you, the revenue that you're talking about, is that gross revenue from charges, or is it the net revenue that we collect from billing? Do you know? The net, okay. That's a difficult scenario, because, again, you go to payer mix, and it just, it varies so dramatically. If, say, one month, you transport a high number of people that don't have insurance, the revenue's not gonna reflect the added call volume. I don't know that that's the case. It seems to me, since I've been here, it's been fairly consistent, what we've been collecting versus charging. I'm not saying it. What I will say is, what John told me that he was seeing when he was here is not what I'm seeing. He saw an increase in 911 calls and uncovered that we weren't doing many transfers. We started capturing the transfers, and we're not seeing the 911 calls, the spike that they were seeing in the last quarter of '16. We have not seen that, the statistics don't bear that out, the reports that you all get every month, just the, right now, the 911 volume's relatively stable. It doesn't fluctuate much. Transfer volume is significantly higher than it was.
We're communicating more now than we ever did.
Right.
So, I think, you know, today, we've got the ambulances and the ventilators, and... I mean, you keep telling us how many, how many we're having to give out to Osage and Mary's, you know, then we might say, oh, my God, yeah, we do need to...
And, you know, again, at night, particularly in the evening, at 10 o'clock, we go down to four crews. And if you already have a crew in Kansas City, then you have three crews, and if you have a really sick patient in the ER, it's gotta go to Columbia, and all of a sudden, we have two, and one of those is in Brazito. So, then you flip a coin and decide, do I pull the Brazito truck in and leave the south tier of the county uncovered to cover the highest-volume area in the Jefferson City area, or do I run the risk of having a 20 to 30-minute response time from Brazito into here? And so, it's a bit of a challenge at times to be able to do all that. And it doesn't happen all the time, but it happens with more regularity, and that's one of the reasons I've been sharing with you guys, some of the evening emails and night emails that I get, so that you kind of have a feel for what's going on. And I just don't want us to not have an ambulance for somebody when they need it.
Well, I think it's good that we're communicating more, so, you know...
You're awful quiet over there, Jefro.
I was waiting my turn.
It's your turn.
How many miles do we have on the ambulance? Is that worth replacing, Jerry? You know, right offhand, or close?
In the 170 range.
Okay. What do we usually put on them in a year, average?
You know, I don't, I don't recall right offhand, I don't have that information.
Well, when John was here, we kind of talked about, we have kind of an over-aggressive schedule for replacing them. So, I was just curious, is this something we can look at? Maybe get this transport van, try it out, it's the cheapest of them all, and then, look, see how the transports are going, and if the actual transfers are increasing and revenue's increasing, we might be able to put a crew on just for that, or even look at something where we're doing them on-call.
My, I'd, the reason I'd like to get them both is, the transfer ambulance makes too much sense to not pass on this, and I'd like to get this diesel, because I'll be honest, I think we're, I'm not willing to tell you right now, today, that we have too many ambulances, but I think next year, I'll, if things keep going the way they are, I think we'll be able to reduce our fleet size by one. And that's why I'd like to get this last diesel right now, is because there's a, there's a strong chance that if we, if we make this move now, we may not have to buy any ambulances next year. And again, we'll have to evaluate that, but I think ultimately, if something doesn't change from where we're at today compared to the first three and a half months I've been here, I think we can reduce our fleet size to 11 or 10, if you, depending on how we count that transport van as one of our fleet or not. But I think that we'll be able to reduce it. I just don't have the information right now to make that. And if we pass on the diesel ambulance, then, for right now, we've locked ourselves into the next ambulance is all being gas. This just buys us, like I said, with this added diesel unit, it buys us at least 12 to 18 months from looking at that style of ambulance again.
And this, this would take our whole fleet to the Chevys with the Duramax?
Correct. The chassis would be identical.
Right. I knew I'd get rid of the other two oddball boards.
Right, right.
And then, possibly, next year, we wouldn't have to buy any.
Any.
Unless the Transit works out so well, we want another Transit.
That, that could be. Like I said, that's, all other things being constant, if the, if the volume stays as is now, and the 911 volume doesn't pick up dramatically, and we don't have to add paramedic-level staff, we'll be able to reduce our fleet size by an ambulance, the Type 3 box-style ambulance.
The Transit makes sense to me. I mean, it's supposed to be more energy, or more mileage-efficient, gas-efficient, and we can have two EMTs on it as well, rather than a paramedic. I think, what do we have, budgeted 210?
220.
We did up it to 220, okay. Now, I was looking at remount, this is where we're getting a whole new ambulance. Right, we're gonna do two remounts, so now, we'd have basically two new ambulances.
Right, but the remount's cost was so high, it didn't really make sense.
It makes sense to get them.
We started with remounts, those were high, so we bid two new ambulances, those are equally as high, and so, now, we're at this.
So, we don't have to add crew if we do this? You said you'd like to.
You don't have to. The best way to do this is staff the van with two EMTs. That's the most efficient way for us to go, but we don't have to add staff. I'm not saying that we have to.
Because I'd like to put that as a different discussion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think this, this and the ventilators are two things we're looking at today, and then, the staffing.
We can talk about the staffing later.
Are we the only ones that like the diesel? Or why are they gonna quit doing diesel?
No, the industry's in an uproar over moving to gas. I know that we, we were putting new engines in our ambulances in California, trying to keep the diesels, because our ambulances in California idled all the time, and we were scared to death of having gas ambulances out there, but there was, that's, the industry made the move to go that way. So, like I said, if we get this diesel, it keeps our fleet consistent, and it buys us that time to let the industry sort this out. There's some discussion between the ambulance industry and the automotive industry on how we can keep diesels, but for right now, they're not available.
I think it's all about emissions. I mean...
Yeah, it goes back to the emissions, the def fluid, and that whole system.
That's why the 2007s and olders are holding their prices.
You can take care of that.
Yeah. Till you're blowing, till you're blowing black smoke in a hospital.
Yeah.
Oh, you meant theirs.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are, the, once it cleans them out, they run good for a week, and then, for the next three weeks, they're junk. But surely, if the industry is still wanting diesel, even though the emission problems, somebody's gonna come around and go, well, if Ford's not gonna do it, then we're gonna do it. I mean, why wouldn't Chevy International or somebody go, look, we can do, we can build these too?
Yeah, or Nissan, or...
So, I don't know if I'm as that worried about...
It's bigger than that. It's bigger than that. It's not just the ambulance industry. It's, it's bigger than that. It's, it's not just the ambulance industry. I, I, we're a, we're small potatoes in the automotive world.
I just think globally, I mean, you're, you're seeing trucks with diesels going for 60 and 70,000, when gas engines are going for 30 and 40. And you can't recoup the difference. And the cost of diesel's high, too. But the diesels still have plenty of horsepower, plenty of get-up-and-go for moving a heavy vehicle, and, and that's what you need.
They're gonna go for a million miles.
Well, yeah.
Instead of 200,000, maybe.
Yeah. And that's something that we need to look at.
That's what I'm going for in my trucks, anyway.
Right. Million?
Yeah.
You better start driving more. Okay, I'm, I'm good with getting both of them, so...
Yeah, I am, too. That's, I think...
I'm a third of the way there, so...
I'm good with getting both of these, uh, and then we'll reevaluate next year, and hopefully, we won't have to spend money on ambulances next year. So, what do we need today?
I need you to reject bid number 2017-18, and approve the sole source for the two demo units.
Okay. I move that we reject bid, Tab, 2017-18, for the type-three Ford ambulance.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm not gonna go for one for next year.
Okay.
So, just, we'll give a new budget at the end of this year, no new ambulance next year.
Okay.
We'll do it now, get this going.
So, this is rejecting the, the bid?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. Then I move that we approve the sole source from Emergency Services Supply for a 2016 Chevy G4500 Deluxe Series ambulance and a new type-two Ford Transit. I guess this is a 2017, 2016?
17, I think.
Okay. Ford Transit-style ambulance. Okay. I think I got it all.
I think I know what you mean. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, let's see, we can go quicker. Discussion of bid 2017-13, Transport Ventilators.
We had talked about this last week and awarded it, and then after the fact, Jerry and I were talking about issuance of the purchase order, and it came up that EMS would need training. So then, we followed up on that. At the end of the day, I think you said between two and five days of training. The boundary did include training. QuadMed, who we originally awarded to, did not. So, at two days, you'd break even. If you needed beyond that, boundary would be low. I think it's a local rep. You buy all your supplies from that company, so...
Generally, what happens when you buy capital like this is the training's included. I've, I don't remember ever not buying something on the scale that training wasn't included. And we emailed the company and said, we're going to need training. And they said, that will run you $500 a day. And with, with schedules being such that they are, we tend to not do days of training. You may do a three-hour block of training on one day, and a three-hour block of training in the afternoon on another day. And we may do an evening training at another time. So, I was telling Jennifer, it's two to five half-a-days of training, but we can't schedule block days to train. Schedules just don't work that way in the EMS world. So, when we looked at the numbers, if you add the, the price of two days of training to the QuadMed bid, it equals the Boundary bid. Boundary is willing to come here and train whenever we need the training. They'll do 10 training sessions if we need, for the cost that they bid the ventilators for. So, um, we're, at this point, we, we're, the bid was awarded last week to QuadMed. We, we think we should rescind that and go with Boundary. Same product, it's same piece of equipment, but it's just because of the training cost. Ultimately, it'll be cheaper by going with Boundary and the, and the reps local.
Questions? You guys good with that?
Yeah, good.
So...
Just gonna read.
$9,929.74.
Nope, $9,002.44, or... What the one you wanted, yeah, you're right, $9,929.74 versus $89.30.
And then, who's the training, so?
Right.
Yep. And it's for 20, just 20?
Yep. All right. I move that we reject the award to QuadMed for ventilators.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And I move that we award Transport Ventilators bid to Boundary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
And I have it done.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? New business, Accounts Payable Review?
Hi, now, for approval of Accounts Payable Pending Review, the 18th, that date is the 18th, and then, Chris.
Is this for just utilities?
Um, there's a question, one of them.
Okay. I move that we approve Accounts Payable Pending Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Yeah, why didn't you get a picture with that?
I did have a picture.
Too hot for you?
Yeah, it was too hot. We got pictures and a video and everything.
And nobody heard.
And nobody heard, yeah.
Okay.
Even saved the keys to the polling place, and went back to get them out.
God, that's, that's something.
That was something, yeah. Yeah. Good thing it happened then and not before.
Let's blame it on George Bush.
Yeah. I blame it on the Russians.
There you go. Okay. Discuss, discussion of Assessor, Clerk, and Collector's software. We're gonna do this in five minutes, aren't we?
Five minutes? Yeah, that's calm, sure. Excuse me.
Oh, maybe 10.
Sit there, right there.
Uh, if you recall, I, I brought this up because I was, our, the Collector's software was up for renewal at the end of this year. I think, uh, Chris, is the Assessor's software is up for renewal this year also. I would still like to see us have some combined software, or same software provider, that allows a more even flow of information from the Assessor's office to the Clerk and Collector's office.
Bush?
Ultimately, when we bid out our software in the past, the Commission allowed the Assessor to go with what he wanted, and the Collector to go with what he wanted. And, and, at least in my opinion, that has not worked out in the best interest of the county. Ultimately, the Clerk uses software, is using our DevNet software right now, because the reports that they need, uh, it can provide for them. And all those reports are normally, for the most part, due in first part of July. Is that correct, Dawn?
Yeah.
What she has to report to, for DC Department of Education Secondary...
Right, and all the taxing jurisdictions.
And all the taxing jurisdictions.
Before BOE starts, I have to have all those totals.
And to the Department of Revenue, and all of that actually flows through our system from the Assessor's transfer of information by July 1st. For the last two years, we haven't been able to get that information by July 1st, and that has caused some issues for the Clerk's office, not for the Collector's office. We still have issues from time to time with the bridge. I just think it would be a, a more smooth operation if we had something that would benefit all three offices and, and have some continuity and flow from each system to the other. Of course, my, as I've sent to you on emails, my recommendation would be to get demonstrations from both DevNet, who I currently have, and from Clear Basin Software, who the Assessor currently has. And wanted to bring that up for discussion to say, today, to see if the Commission was supportive of that idea. Chris, you want to add anything to that, or...
I would be willing to, to look at what DevNet has to offer. I don't know that, at this point, I'm ready to rebid anything, or sit out an RFP. We've spent five years putting our gamma situation together, and now, we've got one of the top programs in the, in the state that handles the real estate. And we've had real good luck with our personal property stuff also. I know there've been some difficulties, but they, they haven't always been difficulties of the bridge. Sometimes, you know, one company doesn't want to make changes that the other company uses. And I think that there just needs to be a better communication between the two companies, as far as that's concerned. But I would be willing, excuse me, willing to look at what DevNet has to offer. But, um, I would have to decide at that point whether or not I would want to rebid.
Well, can we rebid it, and then if we don't have something that we want to go with, we just reject them? If we don't have something, some kind of plan that's gonna be better than what we have, what we have's been a pain in the butt, years, but...
Well, ultimately, I think it's, the Commission has the authority to decide, you know, what, what we use. And I, I guess, to a degree, I, how we determine that, I'm not sure. But to some, some degree, I think, if it comes to that issue, whether it's his or mine, or something altogether different, I, I think that we're gonna need the Commission's help in making that determination. I wouldn't want to see us continue in the, with the type of different systems we currently have.
I would like to change it, too, personally. But if we don't have a system that's gonna work with everything we need it to work with, and it's gonna be more jacked up than a soup sandwich, then there's no sense in even changing, and just deal with the headaches you got now. I mean, some of the systems, that, they make it sound really good for you, some of them make it sound really good for Chris, and if we can find one that works for both of you, I'm willing to make a decision to do that. So...
Was Clear Basin willing to come give a demonstration that would tie, with, you need to all be tied together?
No bridges.
Yeah.
I would like to get rid of the bridge.
You need to all be tied together.
The whole problem that I, or the, what I am not understanding is, there are about six or seven counties that have, the Assessor has Clear Basin, and then the Collector has DevNet. And they don't have those problems in those counties. And I don't know what the difference is that we're doing here that is causing that difficulty.
Well, and the only thing I can answer to some of that is, again, when we look at the role, by July 1st, the last two years, it just, that, the first two years ago, we didn't get the information until, uh, like, July 17th. So, that's a big issue. When her reports are due by...
July 20th.
July 20th.
On 11th.
Uh, once, I mean, you send the information to us, and then DevNet has to go in and make sure it balances in their system. Three days isn't enough time to do that. Last year, Dave sent us the information July 5th, but sent it in the wrong, a different format than he had the prior year. So, it wouldn't load.
We took the acres out, and...
We couldn't...
We also had the acres in, so that, you know, we need to come to an agreement there on how that's gonna be done, to resolve that.
Well, there was no communication about that, that you took the acres out. So, the information wouldn't load. Again, we didn't get it till late in, you know, after the 15th of July. There, you know... Early on, there was an agreement, you know, how that information would come across. For you all to just change it at a whim and not notify us, it doesn't work. And again, we're scrambling to get stuff for dawn in time, and we can't, we can't do it.
I understand that, that it should be, and I don't know why it wasn't. But we have to look at what information we're looking at. The Assessor's office provides assessed values, or appraised values to the Clerk's office. We, we don't necessarily have to provide the acreage, or the square foot, or, or anything like that. We provide the appraised values, and that's what it's supposed to be doing. Now, if you want to put additional information in there that is not required by statute, but you want to provide it, then we need to work around that to come up with a ways to do that, so you can have that extra information.
Chris, I'm not telling you what information you have to provide, but when you change it and don't tell us that you've changed it, then the system doesn't work.
So, it should be working well.
And that's what the bottom line is. Now, I can tell you, personally, we got dozens of calls, and people refuse to pay their bills because the acreage wasn't on. So, we'll just put that out there. You no longer want to provide the information, and that's why it's not on their bills.
That's not required by statute.
Well, if that, then you need to put that information out to the public. You're no longer to provide that information. Because I'm not gonna take the butt-chewing for decisions you make.
I don't have funds to put publications out there. They were cut this year.
Well, that's not my problem.
Not mine either, I'm telling you.
I thought we left them the same, huh?
We increased it.
I just think we need a system which...
To remove information that you're going to provide, I don't think is in the best interest of the tax...
Let's get it going, pass it in, we can deal with it then.
If we go with a different company, that we all can use, I think it'll be beneficial. As far as addresses go, getting the correct addresses, getting the correct information. I just think we all need to be on the same system.
I agree, too.
And we need to determine where the problems are actually coming from, when they happened. The last time Larry called me about a problem, and chewed me out, sent me a couple of emails, well, then he found out a couple of days later that it was a DevNet problem, and it wasn't an Assessor problem or a Clear Basin problem. We need to decide what the problem is here, why this is happening like this. That's what we need to figure out.
Well, I think that's why we probably need one system.
Sure.
And then you, you, we, you know...
We can call the computer people.
Yeah.
And we all go call the same computer company and say, listen, we're all calling the same person instead of calling two different companies, trying to make this company...
So, basically, let's have Clear Basin give a demonstration, let's have DevNet give a demonstration.
Does the Commission want to participate in those demonstrations, or...
I don't mind sitting in on it, but you're the ones that know what you're gonna need. Your staff knows what they're gonna need.
I think we need to participate, because in the event that the Clerk, and the Collector, and the Assessor can't all agree, we're gonna have to decide.
I don't think the State Tax Commission takes that opinion. I think they are of the opinion that the office holder makes that decision. And that's just what I've heard from the State Tax Commission, okay, and...
Well, and they want to write a check for what we're getting, and they can come up there and make the decision.
I don't think it works that way.
Tumble pounds in, I don't care. We've dealt with them before. They got us in a big tussle with Ameren, too, so that's costing us a lot of money.
Yes, it is. So... Well, I can't say the person that was responsible for that no longer works there.
I think we still need to try to find one system that works for all three of you.
If, if the system works, that's, that's the key there.
Yeah, and that's what, I think that's what Larry's asking, so...
I think we should not limit it to DevNet and Clear Basin, and we should look at others as well.
I agree.
I think either way, you're gonna have to bid, bid the software. So, you need to put it out to bid for everyone, and then demo the ones that you want after you receive those bids.
Okay.
We can do that, too?
I think that'd be an idea.
So, do you all direct Jennifer to put it out for bid, then? Is that the process?
We can.
Then I would request that, I guess, to do that, if that's appropriate, or...
What other ones are out there? I mean, there's, there can't be that many of them.
Well, we had one bid from, I don't remember unless it was over four years ago, but one company that I remember before I was on the Commission was...
I think it was Millennium, and...
Yeah, they were very high. It was over a million dollars or something.
Yeah, they were out there, but, but we have the ones that come into MAC and stuff that we're familiar with. I don't know if Clear Basin's down there, too. But if Clear Basin has a program, then we just need, I think it'd be easier with one person doing the whole thing, whether it's Clear Basin, DevNet, or else.
Yeah, or somebody that we don't even know about.
But the program has to handle what the office needs. That's the key.
Yeah.
And I'll talk to Jennifer about, preferably, all together, but they can bid those separately.
When they do the... I guess we don't have to be here for the bid opening part of it, unless they're gonna do a demonstration that day, but...
Right.
That probably needs to be a whole separate...
Well, she'll have to work with these three entities, and these three to find out if the RFP has everything in it that they want.
Yeah, we've done it before, so, I mean, we've... Yeah, we've done it before, so, I mean, we've...
I think it needs to be bid all together, not options of creating another bridge. We've got that now. We're going back to that.
I agree.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, yeah. Okay.
Enough direction then, find whatever we can get.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm against rebidding for the assessor's software. I said I'd be willing to look at what DevNet has, and if they can provide what we need, then I would be willing to rebid. But that's just my position on that.
But it's not going to hurt anything to bid it out, and see what they have to offer, and if they've got something that can take care of your portion of it, then...
If we want to go to all that work, that's up to you all. That's a lot of time and money.
Am I correct, though, in that your contract is up for renewal this year?
Yes, it is. It says I've been reviewing the contract that they sent me, and I haven't completed that yet. There would have been some changes to the one that I've received.
I don't think it really takes a whole lot for Jennifer to put out an RFP, so, you know, it's an add in the paper and a little bit of work to get it prepared, but like Jeff said, it's not going to hurt anything to bid it and see what's out there, and then we can take a look at different systems.
The time consuming portion of that is when you put all of your requirements into the RFP, telling exactly what you have to have, and what you will accept or what you will not accept in the RFP. That's what takes the time.
Do you think it's changed that much from the last time, as far as your requirements?
Actually, I wasn't involved in the RFP. I didn't even know one went out, so the assessor's office didn't input into that RFP. It was already out before, by the time I heard of it.
The original one? Five years ago?
Yeah. That RFP was already done by the time that I was contacted that it was going to be done. Because there was a committee that met on that that didn't include the assessor's office, and the decision was made.
I don't believe that. I don't agree with that at all.
Well, we'll get Jennifer to make sure everybody gets a copy of it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's keep going.
Yep.
Discussion of erroneous assessment and approval of corrections.
Yes.
This has to do with James Norris, who I believe contacted you all by email. I was copied on that, and I think Chris was too. The assessor prepared a corrected assessed value pending commissional approval. I prepared the court order. It's for three years in taxes, back taxes. I believe it was because his garage had been, square footage of his garage had been counted in twice. These are the three court orders for 2014, 15, and 16.
So that was our mistake?
That was the assessor's office mistake, yes. They, when they did the ground area for that, they included the garage and underneath the garage, and there was no underneath the garage.
My only concern was if everybody goes back and looks at theirs, and, well, mine is off by 10 square foot, so I want to reimburse for the next 30 years because the county messed it up. And, you know, if it was information we were given and we put it in, but if it was indeed our fault, then...
What the statute requires is that they notify the county commission, and it actually has to be an error that occurred in there, and the, basically, the assessor's office has to do the notice like we've done that Larry has there.
I'm fine with if it is our error indeed, but if it was just information we put in, then...
Chris and I both already signed it, so just before your signature, then the copy I gave you is not the signed one, but I'll give you copies, or I'll give you the originals after they all sign.
So they can go back, what, three years maximum?
Three years. It's actually go back, it's about $1,200.
$1,216, dollars and eighty-six.
We've had the information going back and forth, and I just, like I said, I just want to make sure it wasn't indeed our mistake.
Copies of them are re-iteration.
No, I think that's what y'all emailed, and I appreciate y'all getting that to a third one.
Yep.
You good then?
I'm good.
I move that we sign the court orders for 2014, 2015, and 2016 for the erroneous assessments.
Second.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
The statute requires us to charge that back against where the money came from, so each of the taxing entities will be debited for that amount. It shouldn't, I mean, although distributions are normally more than what they'll be, so created negative, balanced anyhow.
Okay.
Oh, that's right. Don't try to cut me out.
By golly, we moved right through all this. Do we have anything else?
Why the powers P are here, it's come to my attention this morning, that on the Ameren case, we have another invoice that's over the, on Mr. Sam Sosie. You guys signed a 60,000 for the year limit not to exceed, that we are now already have invoices that will exceed that by 10,000. So, in other words, we've used the 60, there's a bill out there that we need to pay another 10. So I don't know if you guys want to talk about this now, or if I should set a meeting to talk about it.
So is that for this calendar year?
Yes.
So we're in April, and we're already...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
There was a bill that we received in 2017 that letter services in 2016, that I was expecting 24,000, and we took that out of 2017 funds. Is that...
We moved that money back in.
Okay.
We put that in, so we're still over 60,000 for this year.
Right, you're about 10 to over.
Yes, of the 60.
So you have a bill for 30, and you only have 20 available.
I don't think Mr. Sanzousi is very good at estimating on billing. Not very good on appraisal, but...
So is this still for 2013 case, or?
No, this is moving forward with 1415. Yeah, and the latest on the 13 case, it was set to go to the Supreme Court on May 2nd. The Supreme Court decided to kick it back down to the appellate court level because Ameren's argument did not have any basis. So we're still in good shape as far as that's concerned, but it's gone back down to the appellate court, and now every county can have it heard in the appellate court, or Ameren can have every county, of course, to go through the appellate court.
He just, this one month's bill is 30,000.
So we're, potentially, we could be at over 200,000 for 2017, if this is an indication of what...
If, if the amount goes over what, that I had been informed they were going to, what it was going to be, I think we got that information worked out together, didn't we? I will be talking to both Mr. Reed and Mr. Sanzousi to find out what the situation is, because they said this is the amount that we'd be looking at as a good estimate for the 1415 cases. And if we start getting over that, or getting near that, and it looks like there's going to be more, then I will definitely be contacting them to find out why. And out of the total, whole county has about 23% of that, because we have the largest amount in the Ameren case out of all of the counties, but there are 16 counties that are continuing along with this. And so far, everywhere, we've been successful. And as, as you said, you know, it was a state tax commission deal. Somebody gave them a depreciation schedule that shouldn't have been done, because it has no bearing on what they're doing, and that person is no longer working there. But it's caused huge problems for the counties. And it does come to about $500,000 in taxes every year. They'll make the taxes that would not be collected if Ameren were successful.
So what?
Each year.
So I don't know if you want Jill to go back to these to get more, better estimates than they just gave us a couple months ago, because I think Jill, you worked with Reed.
Well, actually, I worked with Don Ru.
Don Ru. Because we had one 60 for them, and we had 60 for them.
Well, what we'll just do is an addendum and change them, put in the additional amounts, we figure out.
Yeah, figure out what's left for the rest of this year.
Jill, I have a question. When Mr. Reed gave the amount that he estimated, was that supposed to be including Mr. Sanzousi's? Or were those two separate? I thought that it was all included.
Well, I think Sanzousi came up with 60,000, which is what they gave us. And Reed, I think originally, last time, it did include that, but I think this time it might have been just for Reed.
Okay. I will send an email to Mr. Reed's office to give clarification on that, on whether his number was supposed to be the overall, or whether Mr. Sanzousi's was 60, and find out for sure.
That's fine.
That way we'll know, you know, is this just, these charges are coming in early, and, you know, later on, we're not going to have anything from Mr. Sanzousi, or, you know, if there's going to be more. Because once he does the valuation of the 2014, 15 years, there's really not much for him to do unless he has to go testify, and so far, he hasn't been able to do that.
Yeah, Chris, if you could just get him...
Never met this man, but I don't...
Also to, I guess, estimate any additional things, so that if you do an addendum, please have numbers for the addendum.
Okay, I'll do that today.
Okay.
All right, I just wanted to bring that up for everybody.
No, I appreciate you addressing it, something that needs to be clarified.
Anything else?
Well, I kind of do. Jerry Johnston gave me this donation agreement before the meeting, when Cole County EMS purchased new cots, they were donating older cots. He said it was discussed at an earlier meeting, and we all agreed to that. I don't think I have that in any other minutes, and this is an agreement, I think it might need a motion to be signed, that we haven't done that before.
Yeah, he told me we'd already...
I don't, I don't think so.
I think you guys discussed it, but I don't think there's any motion.
Between Cole County, Urgency Medical Services, and...
Like, it was like, something was screened, the...
Oh, they're going to use it for their Halloween, yeah, they do a Halloween open house every year and raise money, they give to charity.
I don't think I have anything on that at all.
It's not on the agenda, let's put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, I remember him talking about that. Yes.
Do you want to update on the Salmonella?
Yes, please.
Jeff's been waiting for this.
Made for an interesting Friday afternoon.
Yes, it did, and Friday night, yeah, Saturday, Sunday. We're getting a lot of calls and emails from, and inquiries from the public about what's going on and how the process works. So I'm going to put together a press release today, if it's okay with you, that kind of explains how these investigations work, how the Salmonella works. Because once you're diagnosed with Salmonella, that's the first step. The second step is for them to type the Salmonella based on the stool sample and figure out what kind of type Salmonella it is. Like, the strain that we're seeing now is Salmonella enteritis. Then, once they take a step farther, and they do this, it's called PFGE, it's pulse failed gel electrophoresis, and they basically get a DNA type fingerprint of what kind of Salmonella it is. So until we get those typing results back, we can't really tell. You know, there's, right now, we have 25 cases, which seems like a lot, but not really, when you consider we have 78,000 people in this county. And there's always three to five cases in the background at all times, because Salmonella is very common, you can get it from a lot of places. You can get it from chicken, get it from eggs, you can get it from handling baby chicks, lizards, snakes, I mean, Salmonella's pretty common. So we always have some background cases, but right now, we have about 25. But until we get those PFGE patterns back, we don't know if they're all from the same place, or they're all from the same type, or what's going on. You know, on Friday, when we had 20 cases, we had 13 of those cases that ate at Restaurant A. But if they don't come back as the same Salmonella enteritis PFGE pattern, then they might not be related. And then if we figure out that we have a lot of cases, we have 25 cases, and they're all the same PFGE patterns, but not everybody ate the same restaurant, we're kind of back to square one, because then obviously, they're not getting it from that restaurant, they're getting it somewhere else. So it's like a puzzle, and unfortunately, real life is not CSI. It's not, oh, well, Debbie and I ate at McDonald's, and we both ate a burger, so we both have the same thing. It's not like that. So, you know, it's a process, and it takes time to get the results back. You know, people that, the onset dates for this illness were from 4.5 to 4.11, but by the time they get sick, or that was when they got sick, by the time they go to the doctor and get the test results back, you know, here we are in the 18. It's, it's not that quick. And the restaurants that were mentioned, when we did the interviews, those names were given over to the city. So when they do their inspection, you know, we're talking about people that ate there on, you know, 4.2 to 4.6, well, they can't go back now and take samples of that food, it's gone. So, you know, finding that exact food item that people might have ate that made them sick is nearly impossible, unless it's a private church picnic, everybody ate the same thing, everybody got sick with the same thing. You know, tracking these things down takes time. So anyway, I would like to put a press release together today that kind of explains that investigation process, and says where we are right now. But that's okay with you.
Can you, I mean, maybe put something in there too, what some of the symptoms are?
Oh, sure, sure.
So that people would know, you know, hey, I might have a stomach flu, or I got something else. No, it's not the stomach flu, you've got, you know, some type of food poisoning.
Can I go ahead and explain that there's no such thing as stomach flu?
You can do whatever you want.
Do me a favor.
There is no such thing as stomach flu.
Do me a favor to Kristy.
It's influenza, it's a respiratory disease, and everyone calls it stomach flu. I'm just teasing. It's not, but there's norovirus, there's E. coli, there's Salmonella, there's several things that cause stomach, well, shigella, there's all kinds, but yeah. But I can explain what Salmonella, we can explain what Salmonella is, what the symptoms are, and where you might have got it, you know. You went to Oshlins, and you handled those baby chicks, and you went next door and you ate, and you didn't wash your hands?
Yeah, I've been washing my hands a lot more, but I had, I had three fairly intelligent people...
Baby chicks.
That came, that came in the store Saturday, and they're...
Put that on the record, Lynn, that was on the record.
They kind of accused the county of dropping the ball, and...
Dropping the ball on what?
Well, I don't think people understand separation between the city and the county.
Oh, for the inspection.
And so they're saying, well, the county kind of dropped the ball. And I said, we do not do food inspections on restaurants in Jefferson City, but for, you know, for some reason, because you were doing the testing and stuff, we, they seem, they do not understand that it is not us that was, that inspects the city's restaurants.
Jeff's got a good point. An inspection is a snapshot in time. We can only see what's happening at that moment. We don't know what happened, you know, three days ago, or what happened, you know, four days from now. And if they have a, if a restaurant has a sick worker that is there, and they're using the restroom, they're coming back, they're not washing their hands, and they're handling your food, that's a huge problem, and that worker might not be there the day we're there. And you ask them, do you have any sick, you know, workers? What do you think they're going to say?
No.
No? Everybody's fine, everybody's great, everybody's working. Not to mention that, you know.
You did a fantastic job, but I just...
And I just don't think people see all that work that's going on behind the scenes. I mean, yeah, we have a lot of staff that are working very hard, and once, once they get this PFGE pattern back, and they do the next questionnaire, it's 16 pages. Joe actually helped did one yesterday, he was on the phone with the guy for an hour and 40 minutes, asking him questions. It's not an easy process, so we're working on it.
Thanks.
No problem.
And by the time you find it, it'll probably be gone.
Let's hope it is, yeah.
Well, there are people overreacting, and they're...
Really, you got something?
Real quick, and I apologize, this just came up this morning. Remember last year in budget, we talked about replace our batteries in our outdoor sirens? I don't recall if we decided to do all those. I know you talked about once doing half, or all. The city's getting ready to do theirs, so they're doing all 15 of theirs at one time. Do you remember what was in the budget for it? I don't remember what we approved.
I thought we decided to do half.
We did.
Just because we were trying to get them into rotation.
Yeah, they're doing all theirs this month, and Steve called earlier this morning to see what we decided to do, and I thought we did half. So I was looking at the calculation, we have 14 total. Three of those, Taos has one of their own, and Wardville has two. So that would be those three, we get, we just bill them, they pay the county back for the free sirens.
Are they willing to replace them, or... Are they willing to replace them, or...
They're going to have to, they own those two. I, I think, now, I did talk to a congressman at Wardville, he said, just do it and bill us.
Okay.
So...
But I just, rather than do it like that, I'd, I'd like to at least ask them, hey, the batteries, before we just have them replaced again.
But you recall, we did one in each location.
Right.
Wardville bought two more sirens on top of ours, and Taos bought one. So we've been doing the maintenance and all, all of it, and doing that upkeep on its battery plate. I did need some guidance from, uh, the commission, where do we want to do them all at one time? Lowman will have to pay for their, pay on their own as well. So that's actually four locations that wouldn't really come out of our pocket if it would be reimbursed back to county. So they're on about five fifty per location.
Make sure you got some kind of agreement before you just go replace them and then send them a bill, because...
No, I wouldn't do that, Jeff, no.
Just send me a bill, why didn't you tell you to do that? We had half in seventeen, half in eighteen, fourteen sirens and five fifty a pop. Seven, seven hundred. That's what I had in my notes.
So just do seven this year?
Well, do, do we, do we have fourteen? That's what we have, and then Wardville has...
Well, that includes the ones that...
No, that includes those, okay.
Our half would be five.
Our half would be five. So it's fourteen minus the four that...
But if you get the agreement with them, and they want to do theirs this year, you can do nine.
I hate, yeah, I just hate to see theirs go down, their batteries go down. We've replaced one of ours, there isn't something that works, so that's what I'm trying to work out with them. Like I said, I've already talked to Wardville, it's not an issue. How to get home somebody's house is a little bit of a problem.
Was there replacement on those, was it every four years, every five?
Every four to five, yeah, five years max, and we're, we're right at that now. They're still staying up, you know, eleven, eleven-nine, twelve volt, but, you know, we get hit real hard with some, a lot of action, they're going to start dropping down. As far as, you know, our batteries in there, which is, would be great for vehicles, Public Works has already said they would buy those batteries, twenty-five dollars a piece, which is his core cost, and keep them out there for their trucks and all that stuff. So a whole lot cheaper for them, they'd save a lot of money.
Right. I'd say let's do five. Obviously, if the townships want to do theirs, then that's another four. So, and it leaves you a little money in your budget if something comes up, and we need to replace two more, um, throughout the year, then you, you have a little money in reserve to do that at a later time. Obviously, it'll be more expensive probably to do two on their own, but...
I think the total cost was seventy-seven hundred for all of them, and we put in, what, thirty-five hundred? I tried to find it in the budget, I didn't find it.
I couldn't find anything in the budget that satisfied a certain amount, no.
I think we just kind of earmarked it with sales tax.
Right, I think we did. Okay, I'll move forward. That, second, I need some guidance. I remember last year, I came to the commission, uh, we were looking at doing the reverse nine-one-one system in a joint effort with the city. I think we put some money in the budget, but the city didn't. They're getting ready to start this back again, I got a call this morning, so they need a letter from us to say that, yes, we would go with them, that we'd keep that money in the budget.
No.
We took that totally out.
Because I think we knew by the end of last year that the city wasn't...
That they backed off.
Right, backed it out.
Yeah, we think the cost is going to be cheaper. They've got, some vendors actually are going to be Friday morning to look at it. So if we do that, is the county still going to partner and pay half of the annual contract for that on the, through the nine-one-one system? Last year, like we said, I'd say sixteen thousand.
That was the original budget figure.
Right.
But I thought it was going to be a lot higher than that.
Thirty-two thousand is what it was last year, what they was figuring. They're talking more like twenty-five this year, with the, a same type system, it's just going to be cheaper. And of course, their budget starts, what, November first? So they're doing their preparations now. They just wanted to know if we, if the commission would still do that, they kind of need some, something they can go to their council and say, well, it's only going to cost us half, in a county thing.
So is this to address the lack of landlines and the cell phone usage?
Well, you're rever, you know, we've looked at the services we put the outdoor systems in, and having another method do that, where they get the text message, just like a lot of the stuff does. Uh, the Rave and the Smart nine-one-one system, uh, Boone County went with that now, OSH County went with that now. It's just another method of getting that message out besides the outdoor warning, which can be used for anything.
Right.
Work and have their own set of phone numbers, or sheriff's office, anybody can have. Kind of like school systems, road closings, whatever, they can put that out. Pretty elaborate system.
Okay.
And, uh, I just didn't know, they said, well, is there any way you're going to know the county? I said, well, our budget will be starting from several months, so...
So now they'll work with our sheriffs and EMS?
Yep. So I just kind of thought, well, I better ask and see.
I mean, it's, it's hard to say, you know, until you really know what a cost is, but I mean, I'd be, I'd be willing to look at it. You know, I can't just say I'm, I'm willing, you know, with a blank check, um, so...
Could we have a demonstration, it seemed like, of the sheriffs on another system?
It's on the one John's got now, I think, one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. This does, this does a whole lot more than that. When you're Smart nine-one-one, it literally, people go in there and register, and they can list anything in their household that could be a danger, health issues. So when that dispatcher gets a call of that location, they already see a lot of stuff on the screens that haven't asked all these questions. So, yeah, it's just a whole lot more, it's a better system, totally better system. Instead of just storms, or stormsirens, or something like that, or that, it's just a whole lot different means of communications. So the same thing we talked about last year, they just want to know, basically, the county's still going to support it. They move with this, now, I think they're a little bit more serious in putting it in their budget.
Is that all that information, is that something that's, um, so when the sheriff gets dispatched, or EMS gets dispatched, they're, they're getting that information straight from the nine-one-one? Because currently, I don't think we are.
So are you getting that, would you be able to get that, Sean?
It depends on how they give it out. If the dispatcher's give it verbally, yes, but we don't utilize New World, so we would not be able to get it in our vehicles.
Yeah, this is not New World.
Right, well, no, I mean, it's not a CAD system, though, that's what I'm talking about. They would be able to give us the information out.
They're going to tell you, you're going to bite the dog, they're going to be able to tell you whatever people put in it.
Right, so we would get the information, it would be different than how PD officer would get it, but we would end up how fire we get it, but we would get it.
Yeah, you'd get it verbally, but you wouldn't get it to your, your device or whatever in the car.
Correct, correct.
But do we know...
I'm not sure if that would go to MTT or not.
It comes through the CAD system, so whenever, uh, for instance, whenever they dispatch somebody to a house, they would tell them over the phone, uh, they have an oxygenator there, right? So that, especially if it's fire, they've got oxygen cylinders in there. So, and they may say it, and then the PD guys can click on the call, and it will pop up and say the same thing in there. So, and fire, and that's who mainly wants to know about this stuff, is fire, so...
Yeah, they're pretty elaborate systems, but, and, and we can just say, you know, bring it back to us whenever they decide what you're going to go, and we'd look at it in our budget, but if they want a little heads up on their budget cycle, to see, we're still be, would be supportive of that.
Can you send the documentation again, for something, I don't see it in the budget?
The what?
Did the documentation on that software happen, or...
Yeah, I could do that.
Yeah, because for some reason, I thought it came out a lot higher than thirty-two thousand dollars.
Last year is going to be thirty, I think we, I think last year was right around thirty, thirty-one thousand, so our, our part would be half of that.
I was thinking it was higher than that, but...
Uh, we've looked at some a lot higher through the last four years, but this one here is a little bit more, um, I think better. A lot better. We're looking at another system variety, uh, if folks' hiring GPS is supposed to do the same thing, it's supposed to be twenty thousand here, so, we'll see what we get.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'll let them know.
Okay, thanks, Bill. This contingency from four oh one to six sixty, or actually, I'm sorry. From contingency and the refunds? That's for what?
EMS refunds with MedSir. I don't know, would you say there was a lot of them that they didn't get paid out last year? The refunds, they're asking to transfer seventy-five hundred by contingency into refunds. She said they are closed. We spent a lot of money in the last couple budget runs on those refunds.
Refunds are not, it's not easy to budget. Monthly thing, they're just kind of like, every once in a while, they'll push out a bunch of them. So it's hard to track, and it varies from year to year.
We have somebody to look at that, that sees that they got paid twice, or an individual paid, and then the insurance paid, and then we're refunding that?
Right, so we get a sheet each time that says, you know, this person paid, and their insurance paid, here's the refund due.
Two hundred ninety-five dollars, and they started at fifteen thousand. But we only budgeted fifteen thousand in seventeen, we had budgeted more in prior years, but not, never had used that much. So we assumed that fifteen thousand would be the right figure, so...
Fifteen thousand got it last year?
Oh, yeah.
And, and now we're at, now we're needing seventy-five hundred more. Is that, is that cover a lot more? Is that an excess amount, or is that just...
Fifteen, we spent a total fourteen thousand six eighty-one.
Yeah.
Is this seventy-five hundred just covering what we already, what we currently have to refund, and we're going to have to do this again, or is this an extra amount?
I would say that they need that at the moment, because they only have two hundred ninety-five dollars. Whether or not that's going to cover them through the end of the year...
I don't think they know.
They don't.
And I think, yeah, so the year before, fourteen thousand this past year, that's probably has some, some adjustments in there. So about, almost twenty thousand, let's say. So, so fifteen was, and we had to change the personnel, they had to learn how to go out there and access those people that they needed to refund through med, quick med, sorry.
Okay. All right, thanks. Anything else?
Anything else before we go into closed session?
Okay, I move to go into closed session, present section six, ten, point oh two one of the revised statutes of Missouri for personnel issues sub three and real estate sub two.
Second.
Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.